Let you know the municipal election is November 5th, 2019. The other things that will be on the ballot, some state initiatives, county school board, a county initiative, some of those other things will be on the ballot as well, as well as the city council races. The ballots from the county clerk will be mailed out approximately about two weeks from now. They start mailing them on the 15th of October. You should have yours by the 17th, 18th of October, but not long after that if that. So with that, like I say, we're welcome to have you here. Thanks for coming and at this time, we are going to introduce and turn this over to the forum to our moderator, Ed Dorsey, who's a man of experience in Savoia Fair. He's also a Leadership Golden alumni and he's also a past president of Leadership Golden. So please welcome Ed.
Thank you. Before I start with the candidates, I want to introduce our newly elected Jefferson County Clerk. And since the clerk's office in the county run all the elections in the county, he's going to speak a little about what's going to happen.
Thank you, Ed. Hi, everyone. Good to see you. I'm going to be very quick here. So we, I am the clerk and recorder. My name is George Stern. As Ed said, we run all of the elections from next year's presidential to this year's city council and mayoral races here in Golden and all other municipalities in Jeffco. I want to tell you just a few quick things. We're trying to spread election information, encourage you all to participate. Because you're here watching a candidate forum, I count on the fact that I don't have to encourage you to participate. But what I ask of you is that you hear the three easy things I'm going to tell you tonight, remember them, and then share them with three other folks who maybe didn't have time to come tonight to a forum like this, or who are not likely to vote as often as you are so we can make sure everyone's participating. The three things, one, as we said, ballots are going to go out on Friday, October 11th, a few days early this year because of the Columbus Day holiday. You will get those the week after, so we expect, as he said, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the following week. Second, when? When you need to get them back to us by? Election day is Tuesday, November 5th, and we need those ballots in our hands by 7:00 PM. Postmarks do not count, so if you're planning to mail your ballot, we recommend that you mail that a week ahead of election day. But of course, you have options besides mailing, where you can vote up until 7:00 on November 5th, which is our drop boxes, one right out here, and our in-person vote service centers. And we are dramatically expanding the locations that we have ahead of next year's elections. We're going from 16 drop boxes to 32 drop boxes in Jefferson County. We'll be adding another one in Golden on the Mines campus, not for this year, but for next year. And we're adding five in Lakewood, because Lakewood only had one drop box, a city of 150,000 people, where Golden had three drop boxes, a city of 20,000 people. We didn't think that made sense, so we're trying to make it much more accessible for folks. If you have any questions about that, or the three folks that you share this with have any questions about that, votejeffco.com has all the information I just said. In addition to that, has the ability for you to track your ballot, to see where these locations are. Use a map to find the closest one to you. Votejeffco.com. Again, my name is George Stern, your clerk and recorder. Thank you so much and enjoy tonight.
First, I want to introduce the candidates, starting on the left, and I should note they're in mayor and then district order. There are two positions that are term limited this year that are coming off, and if you see them on the street, you ought to thank them for their service. One is Marjorie Sloan, our current mayor. And the second one, I don't know if she's here or not, is Sharice Graves, who is District One councillor currently. So let me just go over the candidates first. Laura Weinberg, current city councillor from Ward, and to her left, her opponent, Don Cameron, for the seat of mayor. Casey Brown, who is seeking reelection and is currently unopposed, is going to be unopposed because the polls are done, and has a free run this year, and he's looking for a second term. And the last two young ladies over there are running for the District One seat in council. And the first one is Kimberly Brock, and then J.J. Trout. So they are two new candidates for a new board. Let me quickly explain the format. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we will ask the candidates to respond to questions that were developed by the organizing committee for this forum. There'll be at least five questions, and if time, one or two more. Each candidate will get two minutes to respond, and when all have responded to that question, I will ask if anybody has a follow-up or rebuttal. And by that, I mean you are going to follow up and rebuttal, not me, if you have anything to add to the question that we talked about. I will not be offering any personal information or rebuttals that we go along unless if somebody goes over the time limit. We'll have a five-minute break about halfway. We have a timekeeper who will raise a sign if, in fact, you're getting close to the requirement for each particular question. We have attempted to make as best as we can the order in which candidates respond to a question or give a statement, so that we're not giving somebody first shot or last shot at a question. So we did the best we can on that. Let's get started with the opening statement. We will start all the way over on the right with J.J. You've got three minutes, J.J.
Great. Well, thank you to Leadership Golden and to all of you for coming. 12 years ago, my husband and I left our doorstep in Nebraska, and we headed west on adventure, which is how we found Golden. And we fell in love with the beautiful open spaces, the really engaged neighbors, and it felt just like the small towns that I had grown up in. And we realized that Golden is the perfect place to pursue our passion for the outdoors and my passion for service. And since relocating, I've worked and volunteered for several nonprofits. I was a well-being researcher at Children's Hospital, as well as a victim advocate, even for some folks here in Golden. And what that means is I would show up to the scene of the crime at 2:00 AM and sit there with the victim and make sure that their needs were met and their voice was heard. And I tell you all this so that you know that service is a core value of mine, but also I know how to build healthy communities for all generations. And I've been trained to listen and to speak on behalf of others who aren't always heard. Currently, I am the Director of Data and Technology at People for Bikes. We're a national nonprofit organization making communities better through safe and convenient riding. There, I manage a staff and a budget. I provide innovative technology solutions. I lead our strategic planning, and I keep my team accountable to our goals. I love my job because it affords me the opportunity to stay connected to best practices across the nation that I can bring back to Golden, and it allows me the time that I need to serve Golden well. And I've served Golden in a lot of capacities for a lot of years now. I'm currently on the Budget Advisory Committee. I've chaired the Parks, Recreation and Museums Advisory Board. I was on the Investment Task Force and the Mobility Task Force, and through Golden United, I've been bringing neighbors together with different views to have tough conversations and find Golden-specific solutions. For example, we're looking into bringing in diverse housing that not only fits Golden, but makes sure that we're enhancing the beauty and bringing more open space. And it was because of all of my service that I was approached two years ago by our current city councillor and asked to run for city council. And I wasn't sure at the time if I wanted to run. And so I dove in, I did Leadership Golden and the Public Works Citizens Academy. And I realized through all this that I wanted to run for office. And I did my homework then, and I'm doing my homework now. So I'm getting prepared. And relationships are really where change happens. So I'm building relationships at all the levels with city staff and my neighbors and all the government. And I think you'll find that I really know Golden, our budget and its issues. I know that we can balance our state's growth with our small-town character, and I want to do what I can to keep Golden special and make it even more vibrant and sustainable and livable for everyone in Golden. And that's why I'm running for city council.
Thank you, J.J. Ms. Brock, three minutes.
Thank you, Ed. Are we ready? Again, that's okay. That's okay. We're good. I used to have that job, so I totally understand. So thank you to Leadership Golden. Thank you to our former and current council members for all of your hard work and efforts because Golden is a wonderful place for us right now. So I appreciate all that you've done and the efforts and sacrifices that you've made. I want to thank my husband, Jerry, and my boys for being supportive through this entire journey for me. This endeavor is the next step in my desire, my lifelong goal, to give back to my community. I'm a person that people reach out to when they need somebody to listen. I'm a person that someone comes to when they're looking for a solution. I'm not a natural politician, but I'm one of those people that is connected with my neighborhood in such a way that people come to me to seek out help when they have no other recourse. And part of that comes from my involvement of just being in this town for such a long time. I'm a Colorado native, and I have been in Golden for over 23 years. My husband and I, we've started our family here. We raised our children. In fact, I had, my whole three boys have gone to neighborhood Golden schools. Two of them have graduated last May as lacrosse state champions, which is a pretty big deal for Golden. But we are vested here. We have lived here a really long time. And of those 23 years, I have been involved with my community all of that time. I started off with Leadership Golden, as I mentioned. I was a timekeeper, done lots of that, different works with Leadership Golden. I've been involved with lots of other groups, local groups within Golden around town. And finally, I decided to get into education advocacy. And in that, my journey started with my local PTSA. I'm over in the south area, so it was over at Shelton. There, I started connecting with other groups and eventually got involved with the Golden Schools Foundation. With Golden Schools Foundation, I have been involved with developing several programs to help benefit our local area schools. And I've also done a good job of significantly increasing the funding that we provide for our schools. In addition, under my stewardship with Leadership, or with Golden Schools Foundation, we've also received the Rotary Ethics Award. So I've done lots of different things. I've received personal accolades. And right now, I want to continue to be the voice of Golden. My neighbors have asked me, several people across the community have asked me to step up and to continue my journey of giving back to the community by stepping up in this race. So that's why I'm here, and I'm hoping again to be the representative voice of South Golden.
Thank you, Kim. Mr. Brown.
Hello, everyone. My name is Casey Brown. If you don't know me, I'm currently the District Two City Councillor, the appointed mayor pro tem. And it's an honor to be up here at this forum with such an impressive group of candidates who clearly have invested a lot of their time and effort and attention to the city that we all love. And I'm pleased to be up here again, running for reelection for a second term. Over the 10 years that I served on Golden Boards and Commissions, in the past four years on the city council, I think I've developed a real solid understanding of how the city operates and how best to effectuate change. And in that regard, I'm quite proud of a lot of the things that city council has accomplished over the past four years. And I feel I've played a really instrumental role in many of those things. You know, for example, in recognition of the rapid pace and growth of development in Golden, I was instrumental in advocating for a residential building moratorium and sending us down the path of revising our city codes to better protect the unique feel and character of our Golden neighborhoods, especially from growth in Golden. I successfully advocated for a much-needed integrated transportation master plan to help us better invest our monies to help, you know, improve the flow of traffic, keep traffic moving through town, mitigate pollution from that traffic, and provide hopefully some better and safer facilities for bicycles and pedestrians. I was also instrumental in creating the new Mobility and Transportation Advisory Board in recognition of a need to more actively involve Golden residents in key decisions regarding all aspects of mobility in our community, and to help advise council on those issues related to roads and streets and sidewalks and parking. And I was also successfully advocated on council for the city to take the necessary steps to explore creating our own municipal broadband network so that the Golden residents, businesses and institutions can get the essential internet access they need at prices they can afford. You know, I think one of the things that I think I'm really proud of in Golden is that many of our best ideas on how to improve and protect our city have come from the residents and the neighborhoods themselves. And I would hope that if you ask your neighbors about me, they would tell you that I've been a responsive and reliable advocate for citizens and neighbors and their issues and concerns. And I hope if you'll reelect me, I'll continue that work for another four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, people here tonight, for coming and learning about the candidates here, and thank you if you're watching online. It's an honor to be here, trying to represent you as mayor. 23 years ago, I was recruited out to Colorado by a storage tech as an engineer. And I had to decide between Denver and Boulder and came up with Golden because Golden was the best of all worlds. I love Golden. I want to spend the rest of my life here. And for that to happen, I want Golden to be and remain an amazing place. I love the open space. I love the access to the mountains. I love the small-town feel, the convenience, the trails. Just last night, I was knocking on doors and rolling home from North Golden, and I was just like, wow, we have an awesome, awesome town. And we have great schools. I was a teacher in Jeffco. I didn't teach in Golden, but I taught in Lakewood, and it's great to be in a town that's vibrant and families can grow. But we're under pressure. We're under a lot of growth pressure, and that pressure's coming from the surrounding areas, from Arvada, Denver. And there's pressure right now on our open space. Just north of town, Yeti is in negotiations with the county to build on land that people think is protected and open space. It's not. It could be developed. If we lose our border, we lose some of our identity. I care about protecting that open space. Buildings that are coming in have not been in character. I've been on Planning Commission now on my eighth year. And you might say, well, Don, you're part of the problem. Let me tell you how many times a case has come to us where it meets the code and it's not what we want. The design doesn't match our character. The use even is a little bit strange, like, really, do we need another one of those? We need a diverse housing stock. And when I'm on Planning Commission, often I might be the lone voice saying, this doesn't make sense. And with regards to character, I want to say, I have learned a lot from the people I've knocked on doors with. They're hungry to be heard. All I have to do is give my two-second spiel and then say, and what are your concerns? Or what are your loves for Golden? And I hear them. Downtown, parking, events that don't match the feel of the town they wanted. Open space protection, growth that's sustainable. I'm learning so much in the hundreds of conversations I'm having with people. And what I'm finding is Golden is a great town. We have well-plowed streets, we have well-paved streets, but we can do better. We can get the character that we love back and keep Golden an awesome place. I hope to get your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Ms. Weinberg.
All right. Hi, I'm Laura Weinberg. I'm the current city councillor for Ward Four, and I'm running to be mayor this November. So during my time on council, I've come to appreciate how our individual backgrounds and experiences helped to frame the issues before council. So like some of the other candidates up here, I'm going to tell you a little bit about me. I grew up in South Florida. I moved to the northeast to attend college at Brown University, and then moved to Chicago after graduation to begin my professional career. Once my husband, Mike, and I decided to move to Colorado mainly for the sunshine, I attended the University of Denver, where I received my MBA specialized in information systems, while I continued to advance my career as a director of business systems analysts. And in those years of learning and working and traveling, we weren't putting down roots. But that all changed once we had children. And we chose Golden at the time to be our home and the place that we wanted to raise our daughters. And partly, it's because of those beautiful surroundings, the open space, the wonderful amenities of schools, cultural institutions, the history, and all of the businesses in vibrant downtown that we all love and enjoy. But also, it was because of the amazing sense of community we have here. We felt so welcomed when we arrived to Golden that I began to get involved. First, in my neighborhood HOA, then in the local schools, on the city's Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and then I was elected to city council in 2013. I have held leadership roles for most of my life, from my time in school, in my career, working for businesses and nonprofits, but being an elected official is different. I have learned how to be effective on a board of seven decision-makers when you are just one vote. I have learned how to distinguish between special interest groups and the general interest of the greater community. I am proud of what we've accomplished. We've tackled congestion and increased mobility with the Linkin Lookout and North Washington projects, added bus service with RTD, and a bike-share library. We've expanded our recreation options with a new skate park, the 44th Avenue Trail, and the DeLong property purchase. But there is more work to be done, to do to manage the impacts of the metro area growth and our own success as a popular destination. We face large regional challenges around housing affordability, road congestion, increasing population, and increasing demands on our city services. Golden needs an experienced leader to preserve those characteristics that make us uniquely golden and to hold true to our community values. As mayor, I will continue our productive civil discourse, increase our community engagement, and collaborate on strategy so that council, staff, boards and commissions, businesses and residents are all working together to thoughtfully and proactively move our city towards 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you all. Now on to the questions. As I mentioned earlier, there'll be at least five and hopefully more. And you get two minutes to answer a question, and then if you want to follow up, there'll be one more minute. Because questions, sometimes you don't want them to be answered yes or no. They have to be put in some sort of context, and they have to be multiple sentences in order to get them right. So because we're not using the screens tonight, I'll ask Laura to pass down the list of questions that we have so that you at least can focus on them when you answer them, although I know you won't be like the presidential candidates and avoid the questions. All the questions have city-wide applicability, and that's something we do every year because everybody on council, regardless of them representing a ward or a district, gets one vote. So it really counts on this council. And I will read the questions for the audience, and then I'll start with one candidate and go randomly helter-skelter all over the place for answers. And everybody gets two minutes. So here's the first questions. Proposal was submitted recently for the future of the Astor House. The favorite proposal was a partnership who wanted to purchase the building. Our city charter requires that a public vote to approve a sale of a building that's a public building. City council recently decided not to put this question on this year's November ballot. So the real question is, do you agree with that decision and why? And we're going to start with Ms. Weinberg.
Well, I voted to put it on the ballot 2019, and I will tell you why. The voters decades ago, back in the 70s, voted to save the building, and we owe them a debt of gratitude. The building has been saved and has been preserved for the future, but it is sitting empty. It is a municipal building without a municipal use. The city has not been able to identify a purpose for the building for our city uses. So in order to make that building a vibrant place again for our community, we have to ask the voters. We cannot move forward until there is a vote of the people to say, do we need to retain that as a municipal building and for the city to find a use for it? Or can we go out and find another organization, a nonprofit organization, a business, to make it, again, a usable, vibrant, welcoming place for our entire community? So I was in favor of putting it on the 2019 ballot rather than waiting for 2020 when we know it is going to be a long and very confusing ballot that our voters will be facing.
Thank you, Laura. Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, I actually also agree that it should have been put on the 2019 ballot, but there's also a possibility that there was a much better solution out there. As many of you realize watching the process, there was no process for the Astor House. HPB, Historic Preservation Board, was not engaged, as they should have been. GURA, the Urban Renewal, should be engaged in this. They have a legacy fund, and it's entirely possible that a vote of the people wasn't even required because we could have gone to GURA and said, let's renew this area. It's blighted. I mean, it was known to be blighted. And so it's a valid thought, at least to have that discussion. The beer museum idea, $80,000, it was known upfront by people who were observing that process that to put a beer and museum in there was not going to work, and that it was, that we just took that money and threw it away. So I'm absolutely in favor of a better process to define what the use is for the Astor House. Engage the right stakeholders. I do not feel that was done. As it turns out, you could find in the public record somewhere that I was in favor of the Foster proposal. I liked the idea of a hostel there, you know, a residential, quick turnaround hostel like you have in Europe. I mean, I thought that would be an interesting use. That said, the whole process was broken, and we could do better. We need to engage the right stakeholders. We need to have an open process that doesn't just rely on a few people who speak up, but is really engaging, and then we'd come to a better solution.
Thank you. Casey.
You know, I think one of the real challenges with the process we had, and it's a request for proposal process, an RFP process, is you're somewhat limited by the proposals that you receive. And although many people might have really great ideas, you know, we were somewhat limited by the proposals that came in. I thought the proposal that the task force worked through was a good one, but in my mind, it needed some refining before it was ready to go to the ballot for voters. I think we all want to preserve the Astor House. We all want it to have a community use. We all want it to be able to go inside and for it to be used by the community and present in our downtown. But there's key questions about how we would preserve the building if it were either leased or sold. And I don't think we had had a chance to fully work through all those issues and give the voters a clear, detailed understanding of how we would ensure we were going to preserve that building in the long term. And until we had that, I didn't think it was ready to go to the voters. I thought the risk would have been that we would have put it up for the voters, and they would have voted it down. And then we would have lost all the effort that the Foster proposal and the task force and all the other folks had put in. So I would like to continue with the process that we have, but I think we need to, before we go to the voters, make absolutely sure it's very clear and delineated how we're going to protect that building in the long term.
Thank you, Casey. Kim.
Yeah, so not going to vary too far away from what's been said, but I think it was a good thing not to keep it, or not to put it on the ballot. So when I spoke with multiple residents, as Don mentioned, stakeholders were not included in the process. And those folks who actually did participate and offered ideas, they felt that their ideas were not genuinely considered, that the process seemed flawed, or it seemed as though it was skewed toward just trying to sell the building. And that's history. The fact that stakeholders, like the Historic Preservation Board, were not consulted, I think that's a big miss as well. Those types of buildings, that's our heritage, and that's our culture, that's our history. Those things need to be protected. I understand it's, you know, it has been vacant, it's a drain on taxes, but I think it's up to council and up to the city to try and figure out how we can preserve those and work harder and be more effective with a process that includes all the stakeholders and engaging the community, not community finding out second-hand or third-hand or finding out that it's up for sale. So we need to try and protect those iconic buildings that represent who we are as a city.
Kim. J.J.
Yeah, so for the Astor House, you know, I know it's one of the most significant historic buildings in Golden, but I actually don't know much else about it. I was telling people at the Golden United Forum, the sort of extent that I was telling people at the Golden United Forum, the sort of extent that I know about it is, I met a gentleman the other night who, when he was going to Mines, his fellow Mines student was living in the Astor House, and so they made beer and drank beer out of the bathtub in the Astor House, which I thought was, you know, just a historical, personal sort of moment for them. And I know that there's a lot of personal belongings in the Astor House, so I think there's a lot of people in our community who really understand and value the Astor House because of its sort of, its historical preservation piece. And I spoke with a member of the Historic Preservation Board because I wasn't really sure how this should move forward, and I do believe that it made a lot of sense to wait and put it on the ballot at a different time and not put it on the ballot this year. And I think it's going to give them the opportunity to complete a historic preservation plan. They can figure out what of the building does need to be saved and what is the historical pieces that we need to value and sort of keep moving forward. They can also conduct some really meaningful public input. So I, you know, we had some good RFPs, some good ideas, but I think there's a lot of folks in the community who had a really good sense of what this building is and how we can make it thriving and vibrant. And let's just sort of outsource and bring a lot of ideas to the table to figure out if there's something else that the Astor House can be. And finally, you know, it was really important to consult with the Historic Preservation Board, and let's engage all of the boards early and often, let's engage the residents early and often so that we can make sure that everybody's voice is heard and we can move forward in the best way.
Thank you. Any rebuttals or follow-ups? Raise your hand. Laura, one minute.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, not going to the ballot, and I don't think we should go to the ballot for a specific proposal or use. The ballot question that needs to be answered is, who is going to have that opportunity to come up with the use? Does it have to be the city, or can it be another group? And my thought is that until that question is answered, we can't engage in a process for new proposals. We can't go out and solicit more public input on what do you want to see in there because we don't know if it's something that's going to be owned and run by the city, or if one of these other groups, these historic, you know, nonprofits or someone else can actually have a chance to run something in that building. So that's what the voters need to answer, not a specific proposal for use, but just who has that opportunity to determine what can go in there.
Thank you. Don?
I want to disagree with that last rebuttal in as much as, if you're a private group and you come up with a use that doesn't generate sufficient revenue or a bunch of revenue, you're not going to ever compete as well with a commercial use that's proposed. So if we go to the ballot without the use defined, my concern would be it becomes a building for sale, and then the best money proposal will win out, and that historic preservation, the people that have been looking for the legacy, something that fits in, not everything in the city needs to make money. There are just things that we need to invest in sometimes. So I think we need to define the use before we go to the ballot, because otherwise I think the outcome will be predetermined.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Second question. The city is in the process of purchasing the Miller Coors Office Building on 10th Street for possible use of city offices. They recognize that there are issues with the building and plans at this time are kind of uncertain. The future plan could very well include the demolition of the building and the rebuilding on site. I know I see surprise, but that's been admitted to. How do you feel about this, and does it fit in with the city's priorities? And we'll start with Mr. Brown.
Oh, all right. I definitely think it fits in with the city's priorities, especially Golden Vision 2030 that said that we will proactively respond to change, and we won't just sit passively by and wait for change to happen to us. So I think there's two different issues at play. The first is, you had seven acres of land in a key area of downtown, right at one of the key entrances into downtown, that had come up for sale, and we know it was going to be of interest to multiple different parties. And I thought it would be advantageous for us to consider purchasing that, in part so we can control how change occurs on that site. And so regardless of whether we end up building a civic center there in the future, the great outcome is we now get to control what happens on those seven acres at that site. We can make sure it's not multimillion-dollar townhomes and other things that we've already discussed maybe don't meet the vision of what we want to have happen in our city. But second, I also think there's a real opportunity here. I think one of the really good things that our city manager has done is a space study and been looking into the future of what the needs are going to be for our city offices and recognizing that this city's getting, this building is getting older, that there's, we're going to outgrow it eventually, and yet we're spread off into multiple different buildings now. There is a real advantage to trying to co-locate city facilities into a new structure into that location, and most importantly, be able to free up more open space along the creek, which is one of our biggest and most valuable assets in the entire city. So I thought it met a number of really good priorities for us to think about. It's big, and it's scary, and it's not something we've done before, but it was absolutely the right thing to do, and I look forward to working with everyone to figure out what's the best path forward.
Thanks. Ms. Weinberg.
Thank you. I would echo a lot of what Casey has already said about the acquisition of the land and the opportunities it provides. Specific to the question about a future plan that could include demolition of the building, I don't know. We don't know. That's what needs to be determined. We've given ourselves this opportunity to kind of dream big of what could happen in the city with the seven-plus acres of land and a re-envisioning of the entire Clear Creek corridor. One of the things that I asked in determining if this building is, can be used is, not just can it be used for a city hall, but can it be repurposed for housing? We've seen office building to housing conversions happen in Lakewood, happen in Denver, happen all over the country, and it is something that we should consider, given the housing challenges we have in Golden today. We also have the opportunity to have that new city hall and city offices to meet the needs of our staff today and the staff in the future that we know we're going to need in Golden. We have the opportunity for a new cultural center to share the arts and our history with visitors and residents to enjoy in one location that's a prime spot to get to. We can have the creekside be walkable, filled with amenities, all the way from the brewery, clear down to the RV park, and make sure that it's built in such a way that it can be managed well to provide the services that the visitors to the creek need, as well as protect our neighborhoods that surround the creek. Thank you.
Don? Thank you. I became aware of the possible purchase of this building in February, and while I'm not on City Council, I do have a great relationship with many people in the city, to include people telling me, hey, you should check out this building that happens to be east of Ford on 10th. And so I did, and I did a personal walk-around, and I said, oh my God, this building is terrible. I just had one look at it, and I walked around it, and I looked in the windows, and I said, this is a terrible building. It is huge. It is 84, vintage 1984. Building standards for energy efficiency were not on the radar. This building was going to be a huge carrying cost. So I turned around and wrote a letter to staff with whom I'm friendly, and I said, please check out these things and make sure that if we buy this building, we're not getting a lousy deal. And lo and behold, we were getting a lousy deal. We looked into it, and we talked about civic uses, we talked about a cultural center, and a consultant was brought in, and even for $25 million, it was found that this was not going to work out for us. So where am I at on this? I'm ready to tear it down. Why? Because we've done the due diligence. We've already been told by consultants. We've looked at the use that even for $25 million are not going to meet our needs. I think we need to move on. And then, all those things that they just said are real. The Clear Creek Master Plan coming into fruition, building a civic center that could include some of those other things at a more reasonable cost, that by the way is sustainable and into the future. I'm all in on controlling the destiny of that land. I think it's a great opportunity. But the building itself, tear that wall down.
Thank you, Don. JJ?
Yeah, so Clear Creek is the heart and soul of Golden. I think something popped up today on goldentoday.com where I think it's writers of the West are asking for poem submissions in order for them to come up together to sort of say, we value Clear Creek, and this is how we all value it. So I think it does fit within the priorities to have control of that land. And what I'm hearing as I knock doors in the southern neighborhoods, I'm hearing three things. One, in every single southern neighborhood, people don't want to go downtown anymore. They don't want to go to Clear Creek to where we build community and we connect community because there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of people, and it just doesn't feel like it's for them anymore. Two, I'm hearing that they don't want condos, they don't want more condos along the corridor. And three, teenagers and adults alike are saying, I'd like to have more open space. And so I see this purchase as a huge opportunity for Golden to come together, to really engage early and often, and to figure out what are our values and our goals for this area, and then to really just decide together and envision a really great sort of future for Golden where everybody can be happy and come down to the same area that we've been enjoying for years. And in addition to sort of just being a great place to connect people, if we can get folks from all the southern neighborhoods to come back down to downtown and spend money and buy locally, that's going to help our sales tax too and help our city overall. So I think it's a great opportunity to really listen to the neighbors, to bring them in early and often, and to figure out what's going to be the best way for us to all plan together for a great Golden.
Thank you. Ms. Brock?
Thank you, Ed. So I think that I agree with Don in terms of this building is a mess. You can just take a look at it, and you can see. And so I think the best use of our money to purchase this land would be to scrape it and build something new. I'm intrigued, and I've talked with residents and constituents, and they're excited about the possibility of having a cultural center. I think it does give us control of that area so that we can make sure that whatever development is going on there, that it's smart development and smart growth in that area. And folks do like the idea of having one central location that's including culturals, that's including business and office and administration. And as Casey mentioned, or perhaps it was Laura, the growth of, you know, just the city and the administrative staff, they need places, they need a place that they can grow and all be in at least a centralized location. So I think it meets a lot of different factors. I think it's a really good investment, just with the opportunity. And I'm more concerned, I think, with what happens to the vacant buildings. We've got some prime real estate along this area here, and so the questions that most of the constituents has is, what happens when we move all of those culturals and the library and everything to a one central location? So it's interesting to see what the possibilities are, but I think, again, it requires community engagement with our citizens so that they're part of that process in helping to determine what is going to be the future of that site.
Thank you. Follow-ups, anyone? Good, we'll move on. Question three. City Council has discussed for several years about proposing a lodging tax. Do you support such a tax, and where do you see the new revenues going? And by where, I mean, do you mean general fund under control of the city manager and council, or specifically designated within the actual proposal? And let me start with Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Ed. So the lodging tax, and I'm just going to glance over this really quickly. So I think this is interesting. Obviously, any new tax, I'm not, I'm not excited at all or an advocate of raising sales tax. I think increasing sales tax is unfair on our lower and fixed-income families, especially when it pertains to food specifically. So I think this lodging tax is interesting. I think that there's still lots of information that kind of needs to be worked out with it. When we talk about the impacts of what it's going to do, I think any kind, anytime you have any visitors or tourists coming to a community, it impacts the entire community. So it's not just limited with that lodging tax and what they're doing with housing and lodging. So I think that there's lots of things that we need to consider, and we need to work out the details, but I'm very interested in it. I think it makes sense to incorporate something like that, and I don't think that people, there's concern that people might scoff that it's an additional tax, but so many people are so used to paying that that it isn't going to be a barrier at all, and it's not going to be a deterrent to getting more tourists here in town, so.
Ms. Trout?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, and I was on the Investment Task Force. And so these are sort of two areas where we've been thinking a lot about the funds and the budget of the city. And if you start, let's just start by asking the question, does it make sense? Right? So we know that our city budget is a really good maintenance budget. We also know that, as of two years ago, there was about $200 million in capital improvement projects that we had in our books through our master plans or neighborhood plans that we just didn't have funding for. So I think it makes sense that we need to bring in more funding. But the lodging tax specifically, does that make sense? I do believe it does. As residents, we pay sales tax and property tax, and tourists are in our town, and they are potentially paying sales tax, but they're also sort of doing more, they're taking up sort of more resources of the city, and there's effects that they have on the city that can be mitigated through more funding. And so I do think it makes sense to have it. The second question I'd ask is, would it hurt tourism and would it hurt business? And I think that we've got communities all around us, so through the Investment Task Force, we learned that all of the communities around Golden do have a lodging tax. So I think it's, it's safe to say that it could be good for business, but I'm certainly willing to say, if we want to track and measure now and instill a lodging tax and realize if it does hurt business, that we're going to find some sort of solution to change that and mitigate that. But I do think it'll be safe. And finally, we have to ask, is it going to pass? We don't want to put something on a ballot that we don't think has a good chance. And we just did a national citizen survey, thousands of residents in Golden were sent the survey, and it asked, would a lodging tax be okay? And it specifically asked about offsetting visitors' impacts, and that could be for infrastructure, environmental, open space, parks, cultural, and community resources, and 77% of residents supported it. So I think we're in a good place to put it, to put the lodging tax on the ballot and have it be for mitigating visitor impact.
Right on time, very good. Ms. Weinberg.
Thank you. And I have to say, I think this was a question from Leadership Golden in 2013 when I first was up here. Lodging tax has been a topic of conversation since the Blue Ribbon Panel finished their report. It is something that has broad support, frankly, in the community. There are very few people I've talked to over the years who've said no, because we all pay lodging tax when we go visit other places. One of the first barriers to getting it done was what is lodging in the city? And I'm really pleased that we moved forward in defining lodging with our short-term rental changes that we've now put in place. We now know what is considered lodging and what a tax would be applied to if we were to move forward with a lodging tax. So we know what lodging is, we have support in the community for it. The other barrier has been, what do we use it for? Because the idea of charging a tax, additional income coming in just to go to the general fund and be spent on anything, never felt right. And so that's where I came up and I proposed and brought to City Council the idea that other communities have had of a visitor impact and improvement fund. Let's let visitors pay for the changes and the impacts that they are bringing to our community. It's wonderful that we've seen so much tourism growth over the years, our businesses are thriving, but there are impacts to us as residents here and impacts to our neighborhoods. And so by having additional funding that can go towards mitigating some of those impacts, towards improving some of the areas, areas and some of the amenities that we enjoy here in town, we will have the ability to do a lot more than we've been able to do, which frankly, since for the last few years, has not been much in terms of that tourism growth. Not since we implemented the park rangers, the fencing along the creek, have we really made an investment in helping to manage the tourism growth. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I am definitely in favor of a lodging tax. I was in favor of a lodging tax when my most excellent city councillor, Bill Fisher, proposed it eight to 10 years ago on City Council, and, but you're, there are... But Laura and others are right, the challenge has always been, what do we use it for? And how do we make sure it passes? And so the complication we've had on council is trying to figure out, how can we package it together with some ideas on how it's going to be used in such a way that it'll be appealing to the voters to vote for? And that still is our central challenge. In a way, I think we're, it's coming up at a good time now because, especially with the purchase of 311 10th Street, the Miller Coors Building, it's possible that to implement the citizens' ideas and visions of what we would want for a civic center and what we want along the creek, that may be a particularly good use for a lodging tax, or we may need some revenues to do that. So I think it's a good time for us to continue that, but I'm definitely in support of a lodging tax.
Mr. Cameron, thanks.
Thank you. You might have noticed, if you read the Golden Informer this week, that I've already envisioned what to do with a lodging tax. In 2024, I retrospectively look back and say, we're going to use a lodging tax to pay for a circulator bus downtown. That would be a hop-on, hop-off bus with remote parking. And we now have this, over 400 spots at the Miller Coors site. So why don't we direct people with, you know, high-quality, great signage that says, parking? And they get off, and then they get on a little commuter that circulates so fast that they just want to get on it. And if that works out well enough, another impact of tourists in general is a lot of cars in town, a lot of driving around looking for parking. And we have a parking, oh, sorry. So if the lodging tax could pay for commuter, I mean, a circulator bus in the summer, maybe it gets enough traction that residents could use it. And there could be a bus up to Mines Park in just downtown, and then another one that's from downtown to Iowa. What's the idea here? Cut down on vehicle miles, improve our parking situation. The impact of visitors is partly their traffic that they bring. But let me say something about why I don't think this has gotten to the finish line, because this has been on the radar for 10 years. We just have to get three other people and myself to agree on an approach. Reaching consensus on this has not worked for 12 years. Let's just get it across the finish line. What do I mean by that? For $25,000, we were offered a poll this summer where somebody was going to go out and do an honest-to-God, real poll on lodging tax, having that money go to open space, workforce housing, and cultural events. That was an easy lift. We didn't do it. A lack of direction and a lack of leadership, in my view, is why we have not had a lodging tax. We would have one if I became mayor.
Thank you. Any follow-ups? No? Yes?
I want to echo what everybody said we could do with the lodging taxes well, that it doesn't need to be 5% and limited to a small slice of the pie. Other communities have lodging taxes in the 7% and 10% range, which, by the way, is still low compared to major cities, including Denver. So I think we need to think creatively, not about just narrow uses, but broad uses.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, we've been at it about an hour. How about we give a couple of stretches?
Hi, I'm Tracy Case. I'm the Leadership Golden Alumni Association Board President. We're a nonprofit, so we are volunteer-led and volunteer-organized. We have a series of classes every year that start from September and they go to May, and they're all about the Golden government, like parks and rec, arts, history, infrastructure, everything about the city. Ethics in Leadership Golden is key. What we do is we educate our students about how the government works and how to participate, and that creates transparency. So by involving our citizenry and our community in understanding how their government works and how they can participate in the community, either by serving on boards and commissions, that brings transparency and thus ethics in the community of Golden.
Okay, we're back down to question four, and somebody's going to think I segued this question some way from the last one. But question four is, is the current city parking system working, in your opinion? And if not, what would you do to improve it? And guess who's first? Mr. Cameron.
Oh, thank you. Some of you may or may not know that in the last week or so, they just changed the parking system again, and what they've suggested is that employees park in the east parking lots east of Washington and walk into town because they were filling up the lot west of Foss. So one could say, well, we don't yet know whether the parking system's working because we just changed it again. But I would rarely say, no, the parking system is not working. And what would I do to improve it? Well, for one thing, I would try to reduce the demands on parking, as I just suggested, with a circulator, so we could have more remote parking. And in particular, I think that what that would hit is the tourists and visitors who are coming one-off, you know, and maybe just for an event. And free up the parking for the residents. I've been knocking on well over 1,000 doors and talked to hundreds of people, and parking comes up again and again. And I don't necessarily agree that people have an entitlement to a free spot in front of where they want to go. That's not the world we live in, but I think we could manage it better. I'm a little concerned, there are a plethora of parking companies sort of launching, I don't know if you know this, but what's going to be behind Foss is different than what's going to be behind Table Mountain Inn. When that gets built out, it's different than what's west of Arapahoe. So even just, let's get all in the same room, let's have a plan that works for everybody so that when you get downtown, you know what you, you don't have to pull up an app on your phone and say, oh, wait, which parking lot am I in? Oh, this app doesn't. I mean, the craziness, we can do better. We just need to get the right stakeholders in the room. We need to hash this out and come to some compromise, and I think we can, and we should.
Thank you. JJ.
Sure. So when I think about the city parking system, I think about, you know, the entire city, right? So for running for District 1 City Council, that's sort of the southern neighborhoods. And so starting there, I'm hearing sort of around the Mines campus and the Mines area, a lot of sort of, there's a lot of Mines students parking throughout the neighborhoods. And I think working with Mines to make sure that there's structures that they're building now, and if they can have better parking as well in the future, to bring their Mines students onto campus. But also, I think having better housing on Mines campus is going to be great too, because that's going to keep folks out of the rest of the city and parking on the streets, and it's going to cut down on transportation and traffic and parking as well. From a standpoint of downtown area, like I said before, a lot of folks are saying they don't want to go downtown because parking is really difficult and there's lots of people. So I do think we can do better in the downtown area. I think the new purchase with the seven acres of land in the downtown area can help out a lot. We can figure out what to do with that space. But I don't think it's just about adding parking structure. I think it's about thinking about the other mobility options, right? How do we get someone from A to B safely, conveniently, a child walking or someone biking? And that cuts down on parking as well. And then I think it'd be a really great idea to sort of figure out the parking structure systems like Jeffco has to say, here's where you can park or you can't park, and sort of help the traffic along as well. So I think, you know, there's definitely improvement to make. Parking is really difficult, but we have a lot of great opportunities to figure out how to move it forward in positive ways.
Thank you. Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Ed. So the question, is it working? The parking is not working. We've heard that obviously from lots of constituents, we've heard it tonight. But I think the city is on the right plan. I think the biggest problem with the way that the parking is structured is it's being underutilized. I think they're trying to move forward with some ideas of trying to get people to use the parking garages as opposed to the convenience of the lots. But I think it's also behaviorally, human nature, everyone wants to get the closest parking spot. So I think there is some work that needs to be done. I don't want to see bigger structures being built downtown to support parking. And I think Mines actually has a few plans in the works. They have a master plan, and they are building parking. They understand and they recognize, and I think the city has done a good job talking with them to address a lot of those concerns. And so they're aware of it. Kids are getting parking tickets on this campus by the Mines police as well as by our police. So it is a concern. I think that we've got the buildings, it's just being underutilized. And so we need to talk with stakeholders and get a better plan together and try and implement a better strategy to get people to drive and park where they should be parking and accommodate, you know, staff as well in those parking needs. So.
Thank you. Ms. Weinberg.
So parking is a problem that is never completely solved. It is something that we talk about every year and something that gets worked on every year. So just in my time on council, we've expanded permit parking systems to protect neighborhoods that have been impacted by greater tourism, by School of Mines students, by Golden High School students. Permit parking has some successes. We have instituted the downtown parking based on the fact that School of Mines students were coming and parking for free all day rather than spending $75 to park on campus. And that downtown parking with two hours free and the rest paid has moved School of Mines students out of downtown and means that School of Mines is building not just one parking garage, but they are starting to design a second parking garage to handle their parking needs on campus. We also know that in the last four, five years, we've added 4,700, 4,700 new employees in Golden. Now, not all of those are downtown, but many of them are, or they come downtown for lunch, which is fantastic for our restaurants. But all those employees, our busiest time of day for parking is noon time during the week. And that is because of all the employees who come from out of town or who live out of town but work here in Golden. And so continuing to refine systems downtown to accommodate visitors, residents, and employees is key. And one of the things I've asked, and I hope we'll see at our next parking update, is what would it take to have the parking sensors, and hopefully you've all seen these in other cities, where every parking spot has a sensor? And when you go into the community, there's a sign that tells you, in the north parking garage, there are 30 spots available. In the south parking garage, there are only eight spots available. And it directs you to the open parking, so you're not driving around looking and hoping to find a spot, but you know exactly where to go.
Thank you. Right on time, too. Casey.
I do think the parking system is working, because if you consider that the main problem was, as Laura said, that we had students parking for long-term downtown, and we also had residents who were parking antique vehicles in those garages for three to four months at a time and never moving them, we've solved that problem, and now they are parking elsewhere. And School of Mines has done a good job of adding parking facilities and adding, making requirements for many of their students to live on campus for the first couple of years. All of that has helped remove the immediate problem. But I still think there's definitely room for improvement, especially as we continue to get more visitors and folks coming to town and putting a demand on our parking systems. We just had an update from our traffic, our parking consultant that showed that it was working fairly well, and it was meeting our goals of freeing up traffic downtown and on the city streets. But that said, I still think we can do a better job of managing the existing parking we have, making it easier to find so that on the weekends, fights aren't breaking out in the Foss lot while whole levels of the north parking garage go unused. I think we need to do a better job of making pedestrian and bicycle improvements so our citizens are more comfortable walking downtown and they're not driving. I frequently talk to folks who live a mile and a half away or a mile away, and they're always driving downtown. And we need to do a better job of making it more convenient and pleasant for them to not have to drive. I think we know from our new transportation master plan that many of the employees who come to town don't really have good transit options, and so they're driving. So I think we need to try to improve those options for them too, and give them some other options other than parking downtown. And just also, better options for our visitors to not drive. We've got a light rail and a heavy rail, but getting those visitors from the W line or the G line into Golden is tricky. Our circulator bus doesn't run at very convenient hours. We don't have any transit on the north end of town or transit to big employment centers out by Tony Kramp's Park and the Course Tech Center. So we can do better.
Follow-up? JJ, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to just put a finer point sort of on that Mines conversation. So in some of the neighborhoods, we've got, you know, four Mines students to a home, and they're seeing a lot of parking sort of outside on the streets. And so I guess I wasn't referencing sort of the downtown situation. Obviously, we've been doing a lot to sort of fix that. But I think it comes back to that housing conversation, as well as knowing 95% of folks who work in Golden are commuting into Golden. So if we're talking about a lot of transportation, a lot of parking needs from folks who have to commute in, if we can figure out how to make Golden have workforce housing more affordable, if Mines can figure out housing for a little bit more of their students, then again, that's helping us figure out this holistic problem with parking and transportation as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, before we go to question five, let's just go over where we've been. Astor House. How long we been talking about that? City growth, taxes, parking, and guess what's coming now? Zoning. And here we go. Do you feel a recent approval of revised development regulations for multifamily and mixed-use zone properties are adequate to protect the city's neighborhoods? And please elaborate if you can. And let's see, we will start with JJ.
So what we're talking about is our recent zoning changes. We've had a lot of building growth and buildings themselves growth in Golden, and a lot of folks were sort of seeing these million-dollar townhomes popping up that were taking over sort of an entire city block. And it didn't quite fit the small-town character that we all moved here for or stayed here for. And so there's a really great group called Keep Golden Golden, and they helped us figure out sort of short-term and middle-term to do a moratorium on the building growth and then to figure out what were the few, you know, six or seven changes that could help us figure out how to make buildings fit what we want to see? And it's if it builds up, it moves back. It can only take up a certain amount of property, sort of changes like that. And that was good for a specific zone, for a specific neighborhood. But now we're in this long-term sort of plan where we need to figure out, what do the rest of the neighborhoods want, and how can we have that conversation? We just hired three consultants to help us look at every single neighborhood plan, to look at the comprehensive plan, to look at Golden Vision 2030, because we should start with our vision and our goals, and to look at our brand-new transportation master plan, to bring a holistic view of what neighbors have already said they do want, bring in more conversation to figure out, how are things changing and what do we want to sort of move forward? And that's going to then help us change our ordinances and our codes and our zoning so that the change that does come really fits with what we want it to look like. So we're not quite there yet, but it was a really great start and a really great group of citizens saying, we want to protect our neighborhoods. So now we need to give our neighborhoods more of a voice through really good public engagement throughout this process to figure out exactly what do we want and then bake it into the code.
Kim.
Thank you. So the recent approval of the revised zoning is not adequate. I think it's a good start, but I think talking with our residents, there's lots of different concerns. So I think the moratorium was a good idea. I think we needed to do an all-stop. Lots of our zoning and regulations were outdated, and they needed to be updated. We live in a very different Golden right now in terms of the pressures that we have from developers and population growth in the metro area. So they were not adequate, but I think it was a good start. Lots of people are concerned about ADUs. They still have issues with what happens there with the bulk plane. So there's lots of different issues that people cannot all agree upon. So these zoning regulations are a good move, but when we start dealing down and digging a little bit deeper, there's just a lot more work that we have to get done. People are concerned in terms of bigger buildings coming into neighborhoods. As it was mentioned, we need to restore and preserve our character. We need to make sure that we have smart development in terms of what we're trying to bring into our area and the purpose that it's serving for our neighborhoods. So these zonings that were approved, it's a good step, but it certainly isn't adequate and doesn't solve. And this is going to be something that we have to continue and to continue to address. We do not have, we're almost built out as a city in Golden. And so we, our next option to add more housing is to build up, and we need to talk about smart density. We don't want to have any more sprawl because we don't really have any more space to grow. So this is going to be a topic that continues to be lots of concern from constituents and from the city alike. So it needs to be addressed, and hopefully I can help and navigate that as we move forward.
Thank you, Kim. Laura.
Yeah, so some great points and some background has already been made, and I agree that it's not adequate because zoning, again, like parking, is never done.
And I agree that it's not adequate, because zoning, again, like parking, is never done. You should never, you know, create zoning code or a neighborhood plan and say that's it, because things change. It's always changing. And one of the things that's really stood out to me as I've been looking at not just what's happening here in Golden and has happened here in Golden, but also what's happening around the metro area, is Golden is not the first community a developer is coming to with a new type of project, right? The, the projects that we're seeing, townhomes, multi-unit, flat roofs, whatever it is that we're seeing in Golden has been done elsewhere. It's coming to Denver first, it's coming to Boulder first. We are seeing these projects elsewhere. So, what we need to do, besides addressing the work that's being done now on looking at our existing zoning and bringing that up to current needs, is we need to have our planning. We need to have planning staff and planning commission more proactively and continuously monitoring those housing and development trends to identify what is going on out there that may come to Golden next. Because by that time the first project is submitted, it is too late for us to change our zoning. We need to know what is coming our way so we can assess, where could that go in Golden? How would that look? And what changes do we need to make sure that when a first project comes, that we know that it's going to fit in? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr., who do I got next now? Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
No, the zoning changes that we've implemented thus far are not fully adequate, but we knew that going in. We said we were going to do some changes in the short-term, the medium-term, and the long-term. We've knocked, checked off the short and the medium, and now we still have the long-term, bigger changes to work on. And that's why I'm very excited that we've started a new project to do what we're calling an audit and a rewrite of our planning codes from the bottom up. I'm, I'm a government auditor in my day job, and I'm thrilled at the prospect of being able to audit and look in fine-grained detail at what's going on in those codes that we can fix and do better on. There's a number of big outstanding things we haven't yet really touched. The qualitative design elements, that how, not just the size and scope and scale of a building, but how it looks and what architectural details and how the quality of the architecture fits into our existing fabric. We haven't touched that yet. I think that's really important. We know that we have a number of loopholes that are being exploited by developers right now that relating to building high-density residential in commercial zones under the auspices of calling it mixed-use, when they're really separating the two uses. It's not really mixed-use in my mind. I think we can do a better job there. We have some real challenges in the future with the growth from Colorado School of Mines, needing to expand and accommodate their uses and moving beyond their historic footprint of their university. That's a real challenge we're going to have to face, and that has a real impact on neighbors, not just downtown, but the neighborhoods. I think the one percent growth limit is a really good thing, but it doesn't work in the way people think it should. It doesn't apply to commercial zones. It doesn't apply to the Colorado School of Mines. I think we need to look if there's ways of improving that so it really meets what the neighbors and the community intended it to do, which is really act as a better restraint on growth and change in the community.
Thank you. Don, this is right in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, thank you. But I was, a lot of things that I would have said have been said, so thank you for letting me go last. But one thing that I want to point out in terms of my expertise on this topic is my engagement on this for years. And on planning commission, often I'm the person who's finding those loopholes. I'm the person that, when the citizens say, "I do not like what I'm seeing," I'm putting a finding into the resolution to make sure that despite the limitations of the code, we're getting the absolute best thing that we can get. And that's something that I would want to encourage, you know, future planning commission to do as well. But could we do better? I've got some concerns. Our two areas in this town, higher-density areas, are not built out. People are living in single-family homes in a lot of our neighborhoods, and they are in a zone that could be higher-density. And will these changes help? Yes, they will help. But what's not understood is that it will do nothing to protect R1 zones from lousy buildings that are bulky and have heights that scare people. So, I said it on Tuesday, and I'll say it again today. I think that we need to roll out the bulk plane changes and the graduated setbacks into the R1 neighborhoods. It doesn't change the ability to build. It doesn't change the footprint coverage. People can have plenty of big houses, but in terms of that character piece, I think we need to do that. Another thing I think we need to do for character is to give Historic Preservation Board a little more teeth. They've got a couple carrots and no sticks. And for years, we've talked about it. What are we going to do to preserve housing stock that has meaning? And I'm not talking lousy houses that should be scraped. I'm talking about historic properties that we should protect. We need to roll those into the plan and they're not protected. And finally, on open space, I agree with Kim. I don't want to build and have more sprawl, and my time is up.
Any follow-ups? None? Okay, I was going to give you another minute, Don.
Well, I appreciate that, because I do want to finish the thought. I'm not, I'm not a politician, so I'm about to say something that is controversial. Recently, I proposed in the changes to ADUs that we not require off-street parking for ADUs. There are people pushing back against that because they think that we should require parking for all accessory dwelling units. But we are a town that is supposed to be housing people. We've talked about all these transportation things that we could be doing to cut down on the number of cars, reduce parking issues. We need to look at this holistically. And if we want affordable units, it doesn't make sense to require somebody to put parking on their property when that could be livable space. So, I'll just say, we need to look at things holistically and, and be honest with people about the changes we're going to need to make to get the town that we want.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, we got the five questions in, I wanted, so we got question, time to do with number six. This is another contentious issue, but something that's come up every year. Affordable housing in Golden continues to be discussed and remains both difficult and controversial. Before I ask you what you would propose, I'd like you to do that. I'm sorry. I thought I was talking loud enough. But I'm low, I apologize. Let me repeat that again. Affordable housing in Golden continues to be discussed and remains both difficult and controversial. Before you answer the question of what you would propose, I'd like you to think about affordable housing in the context of owned versus rented, and the part that the Jefferson County Housing Authority has and can play in it. So, let's start with Mr. Brown.
What I would propose is that we continue our efforts. We've come a long way since 2008, when I served on the Goldens Housing Affordability Task Force. And I really applaud the planning commission and the city staff for really moving the ball forward in the past few years, of really evaluating, what are the options? What should we be considering? What are the needs? And, and then proposing some very specific things that we incorporated into our comprehensive plan to try to preserve the existing mix of housing. So, I thought that was a really excellent move, and I really am glad that we did that. What it seems to me, though, is where we really have a need that is not being met by the Jefferson County Housing Authority and other programs that the city already participates in and gives money to, is that, is that missing middle, the workforce housing. And I think that's one of the real challenges that I think I would like to see the city work towards addressing. I'm hopeful that the purchase of 311 10th Street gives us an opportunity and some land that we might be able to come to the table and make, have a project come forward that where, because we're bringing the land with us, we can, we can direct a kind of project that we would like to see and that meets our own city's goals. And I would hopeful that something from that can come.
Ms. Brock.
Thank you, Ed. So, I would agree with Casey. I think that we are on the right track. I think the moves and working, the collaboration with Jefferson County Housing Authority, I think those are all good steps. I do think that we can do better, and I think we do need to do better. And I agree, we've, we've got lots of few, lots of different low-income and affordable housing areas right now. And so, we need to make sure, one, that we're doing what we can to sustain those areas, but we're also incorporating that area within the town of Golden. We don't want them as isolated islands. I think there is concern in terms of how can we do it a little bit better. When we look at the Vision 2030, we know that affordable housing is part of, it's one of our values, and it's something that sustains Golden, and that's going to sustain our diverse socioeconomic character that we have. When I hear things about Golden is becoming elitist, we're forgetting about a big bunch of our community here that doesn't go down that road. And so, I was a renter when we first moved here. My husband and I, we couldn't afford to live here at that time, and that was twenty-three years ago. So, we had to wait and stretch every dollar in order to buy our first home. If that was the case now, and we were trying to buy, we wouldn't be able to buy, and we wouldn't be considered low-income if we fast-forwarded the us then to now. And so, I agree with Casey. We need to focus on that workforce housing, that middle income, that lower-to-middle-income housing. Those are where our greatest needs are and that we need to address. We're at about, I think, thirty percent, if I've already said that, and I think we're below what the designated goal was in Vision 3020. So, 2030, it's ten years away, right? So, we need to make sure that we're addressing that and doing it genuinely and wholeheartedly and with an authentic approach, but making sure that it mixes in with our overall character that we treasure here in Golden.
JJ.
Yeah, so, I'll start by saying it is an issue. Again, the National Citizen Survey that we all took in Golden, thousands of residents got the survey in the mail. Only two in ten folks noted that affordability is okay in Golden. So, it means eighty percent are saying that affordability is a problem. And it's not just housing, it's also cost of living in a lot of other ways. So, it is an issue. And I hosted with Golden United, with the Foothills Art Center last year, a conversation around affordable housing and character. And I think the controversy, it comes from the understanding of character, right? So, as a small-town character, are we going to do a lot of very dense buildings? And I, and I think that there's a way around that. We can mask density, and we can bring in the missing, the missing middle and the diversity of stock, and, and preserve our open space. There's smart ways to do that, and we can have a conversation with the community and say, "Is that what we want?" And let's move towards that goal. I think the other controversy is around funding. Do we want to fund it out of our city dollars? And I think there's a lot of other ways for us to think about that. So, it's, it's not just a Golden issue. It's a regional issue, it's a state issue, it's a School of Mines issue. We really need to partner with all of the players to find out, how can we tackle this problem together, and Golden can kind of take in those pieces that we need. And the workforce housing piece is really important for us to think about again. Ninety-five percent of folks are commuting in. So, from a community perspective, a holistic perspective, it makes sense to give workforce housing and make sure that we're giving opportunity for everyone to thrive here. And I think there's the Golden Urban Renewable Authority, so one of our boards and commissions is also really looking into, what are the myriad of possibilities for us to figure this out? So, even though it's controversial, it's definitely something we need to tackle, and we can do it in a way that preserves our growth, and we can partner in a way that makes sense for Golden.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Ed. I've been working already on this issue for years. Even in my role as Planning Commission Chair, I was the one who helped push to have the city council hire on a couple-year basis, a specialty in housing. And we ended up putting into our comprehensive plan goals, and I was part of pushing for that. I am finding that the, the missing middle is obviously a big gap, but you asked about rental versus buying. We do not have an opportunity to subsidize the purchase of homes. It's inefficient. For three hundred, it takes three hundred thousand dollars to get somebody who makes eighty percent of average median income into a house in Golden to close the gap with the price. In other words, they can't afford to live in Golden if they're only making eighty percent of the area median income. So, rent is the direction we have to go. So, we have to figure out where to put those units. We need, we need a strategic plan that says, some of that goes downtown where we can have density. Some of it will be small ADUs. Basically, I'm saying all of the above. For us to deal with this housing issue, it's all of the above. But let me tell you the importance of that. People are telling me they cannot afford to retire in Golden because their property taxes are going up. They want to be near their grandchildren, but their grandchildren can't afford to be in Golden. This is a real heart and soul issue. It's changing the character of our town. I've talked to people who've lived here for sixty years and they worked at Coors, and they're struggling to find that community feel that they had. The mix of housing is an absolute, I would say, crisis in this town in terms of what it's doing to our character. And we all have to step up and be willing to make a difference. And for me, that means my wife and I rent a house below market rates because we can. So, we have somebody living in Golden, and we're not getting as much money as we could. And I think that people need to consider that soft side, too.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, and some good points have already been made. I, what would I do for it is, I would say our current process for addressing this challenging problem is not working. And I think we need to have a group focused on housing. So, the way we currently address challenging problems, we have a task force, as Casey mentioned. We hire a consultant, as has been mentioned. Planning Commission studies it and recommends something to city council, and city council adopted goals, and they are good goals in our comprehensive plan, to preserve that diverse mix of housing that we value. And we've laid out what those targeted numbers are. But from there, it's supposed to go back to Planning Commission and staff to then identify and recommend the, the policy changes or the programs that need to be funded, and that's where we're stalled. We need a group that's focused on housing to actually take all of these ideas that we've had internally in Golden and that we've seen work in other communities, to identify what are the right solutions for Golden. And so, I don't think it needs to be another task force or another board or commission. I'd like to revisit with council the idea of a council subcommittee focused on housing. City councillors have the authority to work with staff and commissions, to convene for public input and public ideas, also have the authority to work with external partners and other municipalities and organizations that are also working on these issues. But in order to make meaningful progress, to implement ideas, to have policies and funded programs that will make a difference, regardless of which category of affordable housing we are talking about and where in the city it's going to go, we need to be focused, and we need to have that ownership of the goals a high priority for us as a city.
Thank you. Any follow-ups? JJ, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. I'd like to say, so, Golden United already has a citizens' group, Housing Task Force, and we've been thinking about this for a while. But I, I would think it'd be great if we could formalize that and bring in more resources, especially regionally, to keep thinking about it. But on that rent versus zone, I didn't get a chance to talk about it. Our Housing Task Force has been talking about, how do we preserve the affordable housing that's already here, that people already own, and how do we keep seniors in place? So, if property taxes keep going up, it's going to be harder for someone on a fixed income to stay in Golden. So, we want to try and knock down barriers. We want to allow them to create their basement into an accessory dwell unit. It's, it's not necessarily building more, more buildings on their property, it's making their home easier to split out and then to get rent and income and be able to, to age in place. And then, I'd also like to say, you know, twelve years ago, I paid five hundred dollars for a duplex here in Golden, and I went back to that duplex while I was knocking on doors. They want to charge eighteen hundred dollars for it next year because that's market rate. And so, my husband and I were so lucky that we could save up and buy a home. And so, we need to be able to think about all the folks who do like to live here and rent here and how we can make sure that they can stay here.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're going to move on to question number seven. I'm glad we got there. Can anybody, well, I'm not going to ask you, you can guess on it, because you have the question right in front of you, but it's on budget. The city manager in this year's cover letter to the 2019-2020 budget expressed concern over reductions in reserves and stated that general fund expenditures and subsidies were not sustainable in the future, in the long run, especially since sales tax revenues were leveling off. Given that, would you support a policy to increase revenues or, and/or reduce expenditures to return the general fund reserves back to twenty percent? In other words, what I'm really asking is, do you believe in a twenty percent? In other words, what I'm really asking is, do you believe in a 20% reserve? Now, I know none of you were on council in 2008 and '09. I was on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and I will tell you, that 20% reserve was a lifesaver for this city. So I want you to think about that and decide whether or not you're in favor of keeping a 20% reserve or let it go down to some other number and of course, why. And I'm going to start with you, Laura.
Sure. And I'm really thankful that you typed those out and gave them to us. I'm sorry, in the audience, you don't have that typed out to see because it's very lengthy. I am really proud of the budgeting process in the city and how it's been improved over the last few years. We are conservative and yet we are still able to fund what we need to maintain the city as well as invest in new things. The reserves has decreased from that 20% and I think for very strategic reasons. I think 20% is a great target and it is what we should strive for. If we're at 19%, I don't know that we are going to be truly hurting as a city. But I do think going forward, all of these grand ideas that we have collectively or individually in this community, things like the solar garden, things like affordable housing developments or land acquisition for open space, I do think these large programs are going to have to be funded by us. I think we are going to ask ourselves, how do we want to pay for these things going forward and not rely on the general fund? So it's not necessarily reducing expenses, it's reducing future big project investments and saying, no, we are not going to rely solely on our general fund and drain that down to fund these, but go to all of us to say, what is it worth to us to make these investments and what are we willing to pay to get it done? Because our general fund pays for everything and all of the maintenance of the things that we already have and that we love and we want to see maintained for the future. So we need to be able to pay for those additional, those additional big projects that we want to see in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, I agree that if you're at 19 or 20%, it's close, but definitely we want to be stronger than we are. And you were very supportive of that when we were in our last downturn. And there's another downturn coming. It's been predicted for, you know, a long time. So we're in the longest expansion ever for this country right now, but there are a lot of people predicting that it's in the near term. So I agree with Laura that we need to have the reserves up so that we can make it through those downtimes. But I'd rather be more specific. I think Golden needs to reconsider the question of a marijuana tax. Specifically, I was looking at the revenue today and up at the Origins Hotel, they, the revenues for the entire city, sales and use, are up the biggest amount up near the Origins Hotel. That's where the greatest growth in revenue has been. People drive by Golden all the time, they're about to hit the mountains, it's about to be tight. Why don't they stop in Golden and potentially spend some money here? When Amendment 67 passed in the state, I'm trying to find the numbers for Golden, I don't know where Golden came down on it, but there was a lot of fear. But we're many years on. We've seen the impacts, we've seen the city of Edgewater basically become a city because of marijuana tax. So rather than be vague and say, we're going to go to the voters, I'd rather first go to the tourists and the buyers, the people that spend money in our town and say, you're impacting our town, we need revenue, I think it's a reasonable thing to ask. Would I want to have, study and make sure that it's collaborative and people are on board? Absolutely. But would I want to keep it in the possibilities? Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Trout.
Yes, I think, I think we need to start with values and goals when we talk about our budget. The budget is one of the biggest tools that city council can use and that residents sort of have a say in what we do fund and what means to us. And so if we can start with the values and goals, figure out what the subsidy means and then how we want to sort of fund, I think that's a good place to start. For me personally, you know, I manage my own budget, I manage, you know, my department's budget and I manage my retired parents' finances. And so my philosophy is always to maintain, to save, and then invest in things that really do matter. And I think the 20% reserve is a way for us not only to have opportunities for the future or opportunities if there's going to be sort of a downturn, but also it's resiliency. And I think it makes a lot of sense to have a reserve and to have a budget, but I don't know that I would maintain and specify that it has to be at 20% if there are values and goals that we need to meet and that the city does want to fund. And then I would like to say we should look into other partnerships. And so when we learned that we had to cut a few of the subsidies for a community center, I reached out to another group who has a foundation attached to a Parks and Rec Board for, sorry, Parks and Rec's department for a city. And they were able to figure out how to get all of the residents who are super excited about supporting programming for Parks and Rec Department, do grant development, have a foundation, bring in an income and be able to support it in a different way. So I think we can be creative about our partnerships and figure out what are the other ways to increase income, you know, lodging tax obviously being one of them that can help us to move forward and tackle a few of the things we want to work on together.
Ms. Brock.
Thank you. So yes, I think contingencies and budgets are very important and I think they're necessary. And I think it should always be a percentage of what the overall budget is. So 20% seems more than fair in this case. I think it's, as many have expressed, I think it makes sense for the lean years. I've been here a long time and I've seen the lean years. I was here at a time when downtown wasn't much and Kenrose burned down and everybody thought the city was going to fold and turn into dust. So thanks to Marv Kay and probably some contingency that was built into that budget, we got him through or got us through this, those lean years. And so it is going to happen. It's going to happen again, it always is. So I think those are the things that you prepare for. Working for, with the Golden Schools Foundation, whenever we want to come up with a brand-new project, we always have to figure out, how do we support that? How do we fund that? How do we keep it sustainable? So you always have to seek out what your return on investment is going to be. And so, yeah, I agree with Laura. If there's new things, new ideas, those projects need to somehow not just always tap into the general fund. They need to be self-sustaining and we need to find other resources, creative resources, perhaps. I'm not sure if it's marijuana taxes, but I think that we need to be creative in terms of how we try and pay for those investments. But conserving that 20% is always a really good idea. I think it's just smart business because taxpayers expect that. They don't want their bank account to run dry.
Casey, close it out.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Well, yes, I don't think the 20% figure is sacrosanct, but it is a generally good goal and I think we, it's served us well these many years and I don't see any reason to change. Should we consider increasing revenues? Yeah. Should we consider reducing expenses? Yeah, we should. Both of those things should be on the table and we should have good community conversations with our citizens to know what are their priorities and what do we need to do? You know, we're going to have a really big opportunity this coming year, again, as we consider the Civic Center idea and the purchase of 311 10th Street. That is going to be a very big opportunity for all the citizens to weigh in, not just about what would we want out of that project, but how we are going to fund that project. And this will be the opportunity to find out from the community, do we support increasing revenues and in what form and fashion? And do we support it for that purpose of creating that new Civic Center idea? But again, just to circle back, that 20% reserves figure is very important, not just for weathering downturns in the economy, but when things are going well, it's that reserve that gives us the opportunity to capitalize on opportunities when they present themselves, whether it was the purchase of the Annex Building across the street or other things. Having that flexibility is not just important for downtimes, it's important for good times, too, so. And we all should be tremendously proud of how well our city finances are run and there's no reason at all to change the course when it comes to how the city manages its finances.
Well, that feels nice to hear that answer from all of you. We're done with the questions, now is the time for your close. Yes?
Is there a one-minute rebuttal option on this question as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see a hand raised, so.
Yeah, I'm, so I spent too much time talking about marijuana and I want to say something about the way our budgets are run. I think that it is great. You can get a high-level budget report that tells you where the revenue is coming from, what businesses, the areas of town, it's great. But on the expense side of things, I want to shine a lot more daylight onto our budget and our spending process. A lot of cities, you can literally go online and find out what money is being spent and where it's being spent. It is a flaw in our system that we don't have that transparency. What that transparency gets you is the same thing it gets you on your housing budget. If you have a budget and you see what your expenditures are against that and you exceed those expenditures on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis, you make adjustments. If we shined a bright light on our expenditures in this town, I would be shocked if the expenditures did not go down. Because when people know that there's somebody watching the expenditures, they usually tend to be a little bit more frugal. So I would like to just say, we need more transparency and we'll get a positive result.
Okay, go ahead, JJ.
One minute.
Thanks. Yeah, being on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, I know that we do have transparency now. So we've, just within the last couple of months, the budget and the expenditures are online for everyone to see and go find. And I really do believe transparency and accountability are huge and responsive government and I think we probably could do it a little bit better. We could have more information in a more user-friendly way. But I, it's already there. We do have transparency right now.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go with the closing statements. We're going to start with Laura Weinberg and go down the table on her left.
All right.
Go ahead, two minutes.
Thank you. I, I'd like to start by thanking all of you who are here and those watching from home. I know firsthand that not enough voters participate in our municipal elections. So thank you for paying attention and thank you for voting this election. It is important. Also, thank you to Ed and Leadership Golden for hosting this important forum tonight and for the other candidates up here tonight. We've all shown a lot of love of Golden and a commitment to our community and it's been a pleasure sharing the table with you. Golden is the wonderful city that we all love today because of the leadership and tough decision-making from prior mayors and councils and the activism of its residents. It will take strong leadership and hard work to continue to steer our community towards the golden vision that we share and the future that we want. The mayor sets the tone for the city and our current mayor has set a great example and I'm honored to have her support. As your next mayor, I will continue our productive civil discourse and bring greater collaboration between councils, staff, boards and commissions, and the community. The city needs to improve our strategic decision-making process and get broader community engagement. Collectively, we need to stop talking about these big issues and start identifying solutions that can be implemented. I have demonstrated during my years as city councillor, a willingness to listen to all voices and to work hard, the ability to analyze tough issues and to advocate for better solutions. It has been my real honor to serve on city council and I hope that I have your vote this election to allow me to bring my experience and leadership to a new role as your next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you. It's amazing how many people in Golden are former IBM managers as I am. I have professional experience in the engineering realm, I have professional experience in the labor realm, I was a union member and negotiator. I know both sides of the equation. I can work collaboratively. I'll read from you, for you, something somebody wrote on my behalf on my endorsements. Don takes the time to talk with you, to share his point of view and listen to others and to yours. The sharing of ideas and compromising on solutions that keeps Golden, the city we love, is essential to harmony between city council and residents. Another one wrote, Don has shown everything you want in a community leader, an incisive intellect, a powerful ability to inspire others, a skilled collaborator. Most of my endorsements are from people I've worked with in the city. They know that I'm passionate, that I love this city, that I want what's best for the city. And when I talk to people at the door, it is seconds before we are in a deep conversation about what's important to them and what's important to me. I care deeply about this city and I think when people engage with me, they hear that and they know that. I absolutely can work collaboratively. I have literally talked to everyone on city council. And even Laura, when I talked to her before I announced my race, said, we could work together if, you know, I were to win. Literally, everybody that I've talked to. So I'm not worried about the ability to collaborate, the ability to, but I'm also not worried about the ability to make tough decisions. I care deeply about the city of Golden. I've heard that from residents. I care about your cares, I want to hear your cares and I want to be your mayor. So I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Two minutes, Casey.
Again, it's just been an honor and a privilege to be your District 2 representative for the past four years and, but it's important for me as I go forward, not just that I get your vote, but I hopefully earn your vote. And so I want you to know that I've been working hard and hopefully you agree and see that I've been working hard for you, trying to be deeply responsive and reliable and outreach to citizens and hear your complaints and concerns and issues that are on your mind. And I think that's one of the things that I think I'm proudest of, is working with community members and folks in the community to understand what your ideas are and try to champion those ideas and bring those ideas and concerns to council. So I hope you'll reelect me for another four years. Thank you.
Got my vote, that puts you in. Ms. Brock.
Thank you. And again, thanks to everybody. It's been an honor to share the table with everybody here. So this has definitely been quite the experience for me, so I've enjoyed every moment of it. I like to say that it takes time to get to know Golden. This isn't something that you gain in a short time. I learn something about Golden all the time and I've been here quite a while. I think you need to understand your community in order to represent it. And so having been here a good, long while, I've made lots of connections, I've worked arm-in-arm with people across all the different sides of the neighborhoods, all of the schools. I mean, we have a very socio-diverse community and I have connections in all of those communities across town. And I think having those connections helps you to understand the base of the constituents that you're going to represent. So to me, this position is less about my views and it's more about the voice of the people and representing them genuinely on council. As a community member, once mentioned to me on my very many walks and visits across town, we need to work towards Golden's future while maintaining Golden's past. And that's what I'd like to bring to council if I were elected. So thank you.
Ms. Trout.
Thanks, yeah. So thank you to Leadership Golden, really for teaching me and inspiring me to run for office and to everyone in the audience and everyone watching online. And most of all, thank you for opening your doors to me. When I knock on everybody's doors and they open up their door to have a conversation with me, I've realized it's such a privilege to talk with people at their doorstep about the things that matter most to us and about how we want to move forward together. And it would be an absolute honor for me to serve you all on city council. But I hope you learned that I am prepared, I'm responsive, and I'm committed to keeping Golden special and to making it even better. So when I tell you I'm prepared, I know Golden, its issues, our budget. I have a deep understanding of our community through all of my sort of city advisory boards and through the task forces, but also through Golden United. I've been bringing people together with Golden United for a couple of years now and we have hundreds of people showing up and having conversations. And so those are relationships and connections that I do have. So even though I've only been here 12 years, I promise you, I know our city and I understand what everybody wants. And I'm not only building relationships in the city, and trust me, I love my neighbors, but I'm building relationships with city staff and at the county and the state level. So I'm preparing for relationships to partner regionally. And I'm responsive. My phone number and my emails on every single communication, I've already been texting with people, emailing, calling, and meeting with constituents. And I want to make sure that I keep doing that on city council. But finally, I'm committed to keeping Golden special, but making it even better as well. I really want to make sure it's a safe, a livable, a sustainable, and a healthy community for everyone, for all residents and all generations. And so if you elect me, I'll make sure that we steer in that direction together.
Thank you. Well, that's the end of our 2019 forum. I think you'll agree with me that I think you'll agree with me that we have five people up there who are engaged in this community and will be well-served by any of them. So I'm glad you gave them some applause. We're going to conclude now, close everything down, but we're, you know, eight minutes or so before the end. Certainly, I'm sure the candidates will stick around and answer some of your concerns or questions. So thank you for coming out. I appreciate the full house, and I'll probably see you again in two more years, God willing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. (applause)